We have two presentations tonight and I'll turn this over to Mr. Gannon.
Thank you, Mr. Weaver. Our first presentation tonight will take place. Mr. Widdmore will be presenting Mr. Dawes with an award. So, Mr. Widdmore.
John Dawes, talk here. Part of John's role in safety in the District of the Board of Education have been awarded by U of the National Insurance, the Excellence Award in terms of school safety. So going back to at least 2011, the school district has gotten this award for all the practices both from student safety, employee safety, with sort of rigorous checklist to make sure that we're compliant and in good standing. But our insurance carrier, really proud of that work. We appreciate the district's commitment. In line with that commitment, I'll hang on to this word up here, but John's going to present to the Board of Education a little update on safety.
All right. Thank you, Scott. So, safety is number one priority here at Queensberry Schools. So I just wanted to give you a quick presentation on what things we've been doing at Queensberry so we can get some awards like this. So some of our current safety measures that we have in place, we upgraded all the interior and exterior public address systems at the middle school and high school. So we went through, we gave all brand new PA at the middle school, and then we already did the high school last in the legacy project. So now we all have all updated PA system with a new PA rack, et cetera. And what's good about that is we will eventually be doing the Barton Building and the elementary school and our next capital project. So then all four buildings will be on this brand new PA system, and eventually they'll all be going together so we can all talk to one another as well. We also did the installation of 49 additional interior and exterior cameras at the middle and high school. So we installed 18 at the high school. So that's all interior. We found some areas that needed additional coverage, and then we installed 31 at the middle school as well. Some of the things that we are proactive on is safety audits. We work with Needham on that. So we go around and we will go through the technology, the art rooms, the science rooms, just put our eyes on it with Needham to see if there's anything that needs to be addressed or anything we can do better. Installation of building map with emergency components. So that's the map that's to the right. So that map there is done on every single building. It tells us where the fire extinguishers are, where the AEDs are, the pool stations, et cetera. So if anybody in their classroom needs to get to a pool station, they can look at this map and understand where they are. So they're not running around trying to find them. The other thing that we're trying to work on is the emergency management guide. We want to get that standardized around the whole entire campus. So when we've gone out and out, there's some schools do it this way, other schools do it that way. So we want to get that standardized. So everybody is following the same exact protocol for what to do when lockdowns, shelter in place, et cetera. Other things that we've been doing is daily playground inspections. So every day, the grounds crew goes out and does an inspection on the playground at the elementary school and at the Barton Building. If there's anything that needs to be addressed, they let us know right away. We'll either go out and take care of it at that point, or we remove it and order a new one. So, current safety measures continue. So scheduling the installation of eight interior blue lights at the middle school. So when we have a lockdown, you know, obviously it goes over to PA, but now we're going to be installing eight exterior lights at the front of the building and at the back of the building. So now when you're out and about on the playground or outside of the gym class, you're going to see these blue lights go off. Now you know that building is a lockdown. It's also going to be in the front of the building. So when people are driving by aviation road, we need to educate people that if you see the blue lights, that means we're in a lockdown. Installation of LED banner for middle school cafeteria. So that's that middle picture there. So what that does, that's going to be, if there's a lockdown, obviously the cafeteria gets loud. This will be in place so that LED banner will span lockdown as well as a little drill alarm will go off. Exterior door notifications at all buildings. So we kind of touched on that before. Every single exterior building in all these schools have these alarms. So if the door is left ajar, we all get a notification that goes to the principals, the building heads, and myself. Let's see, lockdown buttons are in all buildings as well. So that's that picture right there. So we have a lockdown button. So if there's a lockdown that needs to happen, everybody knows you push that button. That's, that's in the principals offices as well as the administration offices. What that does, that goes to a third party. It's the police department here, by the way, as well as locks the doors and sets a PA that says lockdown, lockdown, lockdown. One thing that we're looking at right now is this lockdown app. It's a secure response, is what it's called. Basically, we could all get this on our phone, and we could basically go into lockdown right from the app. So remember that commercial, there's an app for that. Well, there's an app for lockdowns. So we're looking at that right now, trying to get that on all the administrators' phones. So if they see something, they don't have to just run right in and grab the PA or, or the phone in the classroom. They can actually put the building right into lockdown from the corridor, second floor, wherever. And in ongoing collaboration with state local law enforcement, that's something that we've been working with as well. Today, Trucker Parker was with us for a good hour. We discussed lockdown procedures, et cetera, at our safety committee meeting. So these are some of the things that we've been working on. So keep getting awards like this. And that's basically all I have. Questions?
Do all the schools have the blue lights or just?
So right now, it says the middle school is what we're putting the blue lights on for right now. Eventually, we'd like to get all the buildings with the blue lights. All right. Thank you.
Thank you, John. As the board can see, we've been very fortunate to have John Dawes as well as Dan Miller on board. They're just on top of everything. They're doing a great job of constantly putting the students first and safety first. Queensberry Schools were very, very fortunate to have all of them. So, thank you. The second presentation will be, it's a Northern Rivers update. So if the board remembers, we began a contract years ago with Parsons, which was a clinic for students to receive counseling services right here at school. It was a, it was a really nice move for us as a school district, to be able to have our students' families come right here on our premises. Students to be able to leave class and come to be counseled here at Queensberry School. Well, Robin Scotland has been acting as an excellent liaison, and we're here to update you on what we have done this past year with some of our American Rescue Act funding. So, Robin, thank you.
Am I able to move this microphone? Can you hear me? Okay. I'll just stand off to the side a little bit here so I can see everybody. So thank you for having me here tonight to share this information with you. I think it's pretty powerful, the work that we're doing here in this area. My technical title is the Assistant Director of Student Support Services here with the district, and one of my roles is overseeing this program within our office along with Chris Bennett-Martens, our director. So what is Northern Rivers? You may have heard it in the past referred to as Parsons, which it is still technically. But Parsons falls under the umbrella of Northern Rivers, and we're consciously using that title because it is on all of their letterheads and badges, and we think it's easier for parents to understand if we're using the same language. It is a mental health agency providing school-based clinical services for students in need. The nice thing is they also work with students' families. So there's a family component, and they can provide medication management for students in conjunction with treatment. So it's really a full wraparound service for some of our higher-deep students. It is considered a medical appointment, so it's kind of similar to almost having a doctor's office right here on campus for mental health, and it gets billed through insurance, and they do take almost all insurances out there along with Medicaid. We have not had an issue with people, you know, not being able to have this service because of insurance. And for any student A-12 in our building, the biggest criteria is the student must have a severe persistent mental illness or an SPMI, and it needs to be significant enough that it just impacts their daily functioning. Some examples would be anxiety, depression, ADHD, oppositional disorders, but that list goes on and on. So the nice thing I think about having the partnership right here on campus is we serve our students right here. By adding this second clinician this year with this funding, we're now able to service 80 to 95 students in this current school year, which is pretty amazing considering in past years that they have only been 25 or 30. So it is a significant jump. There's opportunities for direct collaboration between the clinician and school staff, and it's much easier to have that communication when they're right here on campus, and that really does benefit our students. I know our clinicians and therapists have shared that they appreciate getting immediate feedback from schools, from the teachers here. They're able to communicate on a daily basis, which is really helpful if they need to reach out to somebody. Or if it's somebody in a private practice, you could be, you know, days kind of, you know, leaving messages and making phone calls. It's much more efficient. And a nice thing too is that it minimizes travel time to outside providers, which is helpful for parents, and also if parents lack transportation, this is an advantage to them as well. One of the keys that we found for success for having this partnership is that in every building, we have monthly meetings with guidance counselors, school psychologists, social workers, and administrators. We kind of all come together at the table for at least an hour to talk about all of the students on the case load or any, you know, concerns that come up, as long as we have the release of information to do so. So just so you have kind of some, you know, basis with the names here, this is Kelly Doring. She is our clinician who has been with us. Her case load is about 20 to 25 students. It's really half clinical services and half case management. So her type of service may be more intensive than our new clinician, so that's why her case load is a little on the smaller side. She has background in social work, bachelor's in psychology, and prior experience in residential programs for students and adolescents. And this is her schedule here. So she's busy every day of the week in all different buildings. Her session times vary based on the clinical needs, so it's not the same for every student. It's really individualized. This is Savannah Davis, who joined us this year. She just started on November 22nd. We really enjoyed getting to know her. She does all clinical services, so she has more direct, you know, sessions with students. So her case load can be a little bit higher. She doesn't have the case management component. So she can service this year 60 to 70 students potentially. She has a similar background in social work and bachelor's in psychology, and her previous experience was locally with Playo Counseling, if you're familiar with them. She also had some prior volunteer experience creating student empowerment groups in Kenya, which is, you know, a neat experience to bring to the table. And she's also going to be busy every single day of the week in our building. So just understanding a little bit more about the services. Again, students receive the level of counseling services that they need here on campus. It is individualized based on that. If you're curious where the offices are located, there is kind of a Parsons home-based office near the gym right here at the elementary school. That is primarily where Kelly Doring's office is. We have another now more permanent space at the high school as well in the guidance suite, and that will be Savannah Davis's home base. And then when they're in the WHBI, they use our social workers office, and in QMS, there's a conference room and a guidance unit that they're using. One question that often comes up is, you know, are they able to intervene in the moment with students here if we have a student who's in crisis or needs something? And the answer to that is yes, but only if it's a student that they are currently working with. Again, back to, you know, it's like having a doctor's office here. So they're not able to interact with students that they don't typically work with. And again, they must have that release of information on final order to communicate with the school. So if any of them, we didn't have that, we wouldn't be able to share information. This is just kind of for your information. I am sharing this information out with all of our buildings and teachers and staff so that they understand a little bit more about the program. And we want, you know, students or teachers to feel, you know, that they have a role in this process as well. So if a teacher or a staff member, as a student, that they think would benefit from the services, we kind of wanted to streamline the process a little bit so not everybody was submitting referrals. So the process would be, they would discuss the student's needs with a school counselor, school psychologist, or social worker, involve the parents or guardians in the discussion, and then the school counselor, school psychologist, or social worker, or even the admin or parent could make the referral to Northern Rivers. And then the next step in that process is they reach out to the family to schedule an intake, and it goes from there. And again, just that point about we have to have that release of information of the top of them. So it's a pretty short and sweet presentation, but just wanted to share that news. We do have students here on campus struggling with mental health, and I think this year more than ever. So I think it's really exciting that we have this additional level of service. I can share with you there, Kelly's case load is pretty full right now at about 30 students. Since Savannah has joined us, she's rapidly picking up all those people who are on our waitlist, which was about 30 students. And on average, I think they're getting about eight to 10 referrals a month. So there are quite a few referrals coming in for students. Any other questions?
There we go. I have a quick question. Can you talk a little bit about some of the non-clinical services that they're providing? You mentioned case management. Is there anything else? Do they do PD? Do they?
They don't do PD, but I think part of that case management is really like working with a family and any other outside provider that that student may be associated with or working with. That's part of it. They do, you know, individual counseling with the student. They'll do family counseling as the family come into the building as well. And then that medication management component too. But they don't necessarily do professional development, although they're fantastic to work with. So anytime we are in meetings, I feel like our meetings with them once a month kind of lends itself to some professional development, because they're always budget meeting after all the way.
And are they year-round? Like, do they go here in the summer?
Yeah. Yeah. They are year-round. So students do get the services all throughout the summer as well. They come in on campus. Yeah, no, that's okay.
Actually, somewhere related to funding. So is it one of the positions that is part of the education relief and recovery funding? Or is it, how does that work? And then when does that need to be spent? What's the deadline on that?
That's a question for, for Mr. Gannon, I would believe.
Yes. Thank you. Okay. There we go. So, right now, what we've done is, one, one thing that we had shared with the board years ago, we actually developed a co-ser. So when I was the assistant superintendent, we developed a co-ser with OCS, so that you would be able to receive the aid back the following year on these positions. So actually, as I was just thinking about it, this position will be added to that co-ser agreement. So that way, it will actually, we will receive, and I couldn't tell you the exact beat about, about 50% back on the position. So it's a sustainable position, you know, even without the American Rescue Act funding. So that's what we'll do. We'll make sure it's added to that co-ser agreement, and, you know, next year we would receive 50% aid back on that. So we would be able to sustain this position. So these, there was, there is a need for two clinicians here. They fill up very, very quickly. And we've actually, it took Northern Rivers several months, I would say approximately six months, to find another clinician from the initial box that we had. So we feel very fortunate to have two here on you.
What you're saying is funded with the co-ser, not with the rescue funds?
Right. So what we'll end up doing this year, we will not end up using the American Rescue Act. I'm sorry. I started to think about that. I forgot that it would be over in the co-ser. So, yes.
Thank you.
Yeah.
And I think that's a good point too. In the past, I know we've always had students on our waiting list, and the waiting list gets much longer as the school year progresses, and that's been a frustration, I think, for, you know, teachers and staff and counselors for getting students. So it's definitely, definitely good. Thank you for your time. I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Turn it off.
Moving to open forum. The next, as per district policy, 1030, the Board of Education recognizes its responsibility to hear and respond to public comment, and therefore encourages public participation at board meetings. There are two specific open forums at each regular board meeting to provide opportunities to address the board. Assignment in sheet will be available, so all guest speakers can sign in and provide their names, telephone numbers, and current addresses. This personal information will be used by the Board of Education to deliver a response to the speaker if warranted. Residents of Queensberry Union Free School District will be the only guests invited to present cases to the Board of Education. Under special circumstances, the board can waive this residential requirement. Persons wishing to speak need to adhere to the following protocol. Speakers first need to sign in and then be recognized by the Board of Education president. They then must identify themselves, their address, any organization they may be representing at the meeting, and the agenda, the agenda topic they wish to discuss. Comments should be kept as brief as possible relating to school matters. As such, each speaker will be limited to the speaking time of three minutes. Additionally, for anyone, individuals allowed to speak a second time every guest, excuse me, desiring the chance to address the board, must be permitted to speak once. This time period may not exceed 30 minutes. Time limit of 30 minutes may be waived by a majority vote of the Board of Education. All speakers are to conduct themselves in a civil manner, obscene language, libelous statements, threats, and violence, statements advocating racial, religious, or other forms of prejudice will not be tolerated. The president is responsible for the orderly conduct of the meeting, shall rule on such matters at the time to be allowed for public discussion, appropriateness of the subject being presented, and the suitability of the time of such presentation. The Board of Education as a whole shall have the final decision determining appropriateness of all such rules. Who are you signing up to now? Chris Barrett.
Hello, Chris Barrett. Is this on? Is it, oh, yeah. Chris Barrett, Queensberry Middle School, Father. Hello, everybody. Today is 631 of just 15 days of slow spread to fly at the curve to keep from overwhelming the hospital system. It's unbelievable. It just keeps going. We now have a new mandate, a new emergency declaration. Governor Hochul, on November 26th, the day after Commissioner Public Health, Volume 8, Title 10, Section 2.60, which compelled masks in school from August 27th to November 25th, expired. The next day, Governor Hochul declared a state of emergency due to the Omicron variant with zero cases in New York. Zero. It was a new variant discovered in South Africa for fully vaccinated individuals. The doctor who discovered it, Dr. Angelique Kooitsi, said that all of the vaccinated individuals had, quote, "extremely mild symptoms." Yet we are now under another draconian lockdown due to a new variant. Now, according to CDC, the American infections, 80% of the Omicron positive cases in America are fully vaccinated. 80%. A third of those are boosted. This is directly from the CDC. My point in bringing any of this stuff up, especially to you guys, because since August, since I've been coming here, we've been talking about who decides? Who decides who wears masks? And you're going to have to decide very soon here. She's already laying the groundwork right now. Hochul says that, "I want students to stop wearing masks in school." The key to doing that is getting them vaccinated, and then had some shaky stuff about whether or not she's willing to force vaccines onto children. Now, my son has every legal FDA-approved vaccine required to attend a New York State school. We don't have in America a COVID-19 FDA-approved vaccine. It doesn't exist. Comorantatty is approved. It's not available. So you can't get it. I can't get it. You can't get it. Nobody here has Comorantatty, which is FDA-approved. Everything else is through these emergency youth authorization. So you're going to have to make a decision very soon. This stuff where you just keep going along like, "I hope it stops. I hope it gets better." It's clearly not. It's not getting better. They're just doing more and more, especially this most recent one. I know it feels a little better because if you're fully vaccinated, the business can choose to allow people to show their papers, and then you don't have to wear masks inside. Even though Warren County nurse, who I spoke to for a half an hour, because my son spent a week on house arrest because he's on the swim team, he had an exposure. Perfectly healthy children, a negative test doesn't preclude him from being under house arrest. Fully vaccinated kids get to carry on with their life and spread it all around. I got in great detail. She understood, and she actually didn't disagree with what I said. She sees the logical fallacies in allowing fully vaccinated children who may be infected, who may transmit it, spread it to everybody else. But unvaccinated children have to go under house arrest. It doesn't make any sense, and if they're asymptomatic, they're not spreading it. And I'm, I'm very concerned about what we have coming up here. I think you're going to have to make a decision. Each of you, like this, like... I don't know how we can pretend that this is like a real anymore, like the mandates here, like we're, it's okay if, if this were private. If my business, if I force my employees to be fully vaccinated, and I tell clients who come in to be vaccinated, "You don't have to wear a mask, but otherwise you're a super spreader if you're, if you're, if you don't do this." Like, at some point, just so you know, 90, 90 minutes ago, it was reported that Governor Hochul says, "We have left it to the counties to enforce." So the counties can choose not to enforce it, but we hope the counties are enforcing. That's who decides. I've been saying it since August. We decide right here. We decide. Now, sure, no, you're not Warren County. No, but you are absolutely a big part of Warren County. You can influence it. And frankly, I'm waiting for an email back or a phone call or a meeting from Director Jones to have, to discuss this because it's insane, and I have some valid concerns here. I haven't heard back yet. I anticipate a response, but I hope that you guys consider doing what you can. And to be honest with you, just saying you don't support this, even if you keep doing it, putting down and collecting your paycheck, fine. Saying you don't support it is enough. I've had several public servants at Queensberry staff tell me and thank me for saying what I say here because they agree with me, and I'm sticking up for them because they don't agree with this stuff. If you don't agree with it, I hope you consider being a little more vocal about it. I'm afraid this stuff is coming to a head, but, I don't know. We'll see. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
For anybody else that did not sign up, which is mistaken the first of the four. Okay, moving along. Mr. Widdmore?
What is your resolution regarding Board of Education 2022 advocacy priorities? Intervene for school district Board of Education regarding apps priorities for the 2022 legislative set. Whereas Queensberry for school district strives to provide outstanding education post-secondary pathways for each and every student where the district recognizes, be permitted, shown by the legislature, and exactly before we fund the foundation of law. Whereas district works diligently to meet the needs while also with its possible expansion, even while our third year of pandemic. And whereas district is facing significant increased costs due to inflationary factors from labor, building goods. Whereas property tax levy legislation, state law has provided an increased need for state aid to maintain body programs. Whereas public schools are being asked to afford for students than ever before, so they are prepared for college, military, or career. Whereas each child in Queensberry High School District won't have one opportunity to go to Whereas each child in Queensbury Free School District will have one opportunity to go through the full elementary and secondary educational experience. Therefore, being resolved that Queensbury Free School District Board of Education calls on the New York State Legislature Governor Kathy Hoagland to act upon the following priorities. Priority one, fund and adjust foundation aid programs. Include a do minimum increase for all districts regardless of a foundation aid phase level. Maintain the same harvest provision and finally fully fund expense-based aids. Item two, increase the thirty thousand dollar threshold of aid for career and technical education programs, CTE programs, by providing one hundred percent availability for the salaries of CTE teachers. Priority number three, building aid for small capital rivals. Increase the threshold for base year capital outlay expenses from an current amount established in two thousand and two from one hundred thousand dollars to two hundred fifty thousand dollars to assist districts in making critical capital improvements.
Motion? Second?
Second? Yep.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Close, abstain, carry?
Recommend that the Board approve item B. Motion to approve the closed task package report that follows. Whereas the education law provides that the task package shall be relieved of responsibility to the unfulfilled portion of the town. This one, A, complete listing of taxes that certify the Board of Education. The legislature fixed her, Natalie Davis' statement and filed a statement of contempt for handling the tax warrant. Sort of containment verified that received a signed form with letter. Be resolved that subject above criteria in compliance with Board of Education steps and report the tax codes and threats that assist the benefit of tax.
Motion please?
I'm moved.
Second? Amy? Sorry. Discussion? All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Close? Abstain? Carry?
Recommend that the Board approve this consent item C through W.
Anybody need anything pulled up? C through W. Motion please? Second? Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Close? Abstain? Carry? Dan?
Educational, item A. I recommend the Board move to approve the following probationary appointment of Kelly DiCaprio for a three-year probationary appointment for QMS and QHS school social worker.
Motion please? Daisy, second?
Second?
That? Discussion? All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Close? Abstain? Carry?
Congratulations, Kelly.
Action item B, I recommend the Board move to approve the following probationary appointment of Emily Derway to a four-year probationary position at QES as a grade three teacher.
Motion please?
I'm moved.
Amy? And second?
Yep.
Discussion? All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Close? Abstain? Carry?
Congratulations, Emily.
Action item C, I recommend the Board move to approve the following probationary appointment of Caitlin Reeves to a three-year probationary appointment as the WHBI art teacher.
Motion please? So, Fran? Second? Amy? Discussion? All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Close? Abstain? Carry?
Action item D, I recommend the Board move to approve the following long-term substitute appointment of Jeff Fisher as a QMS PD health teacher.
Motion please?
I'm moved.
Daisy? Second?
Second?
All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Close? Abstain? Carry?
I recommend the Board move to approve educational consent items E through M.
E through M, does anybody need anything pulled? Motion please?
I'm moved.
Daisy?
Second? Second?
Like that?
Yep.
Discussion? All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
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 Abstain? Carry? Worked many reports? Daisy? Fran?
We did eat today, but I think, uh, Mr. DeHus kind of went over everything we talked about. Wasn't about talking, because I can't talk.
Wellness committee?
So tomorrow, I think everybody in this room hopefully is aware and excited. Uh, polls open at eight-thirty tomorrow morning. We're very excited after lots of planning and the board's hard work and dedication to the students here at Queensbury. Tomorrow we'll be voting on a nineteen billion, uh, over a nineteen billion dollar project, and which roofs, boilers, I, I know you've seen the presentation over and over. We've done our best to educate the community. We're very excited. This is really needed for kids. So make us proud that voters come out and, uh, support our school. With that said, um, I could not thank the Board for being more supportive as we planned this. Uh, John Dawes for his tireless commitment to, uh, making sure that we've done everything we could for, uh, every single piece. Boiler, every boiler, every roof, uh, and Mr. Whittlemore for the dollars and cents of the bad ass at all times. Lots of meetings to prepare for tomorrow's vote and, uh, obviously, or ten AM, I'm sorry, ten, ten AM to eight-thirty at night. Ten AM to eight-thirty because the, the polls open. So, uh, but we could not be more thankful for everyone. So tomorrow, can't wait.
Great, thanks, Mr. Dan. Or more comments? Moving along to our second open forum. Anybody, nobody signed up? Anybody for second? Mr. Kosha?
I just wanted to congratulate the Board and the staff on music programs that have been watching. Uh, I obviously can't go because you only have three tickets. My family uses up the three tickets, but I've been watching them on, uh, on video and, uh, doing a good job. Just thanks to the staff.
Make sure your comments, Mr. Kosha. Nobody else? Informational items again, capital project vote tomorrow at seven AM to eight-thirty in the elementary auditorium. Horse concert, a band concert's coming up. Recessing course. Go that far. Have need for executive session. Uh, the motion to go into the executive session would be pursuant to subdivision one, uh, section one oh five of the open meetings law to discuss the appointment history of a particular person and matters leading to the appointment, employment, discipline or removal of a particular person. Subdivision one E of the open meetings law to discuss collective negotiations pursuant to article fourteen of the Civil Service Law. Subdivision one D of the open meetings law to discuss pending litigation pursuant to subdivision three of section one oh eight of the open meetings law to discuss matters made confidential by the federal or state law involving attorney finding or with matters pursuant to section one oh three. Here in civil practice laws and rules. Can I have a motion please? So, Fran? Second?
Second?
Amy? Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Close? Carry? Thank you, everyone, for coming tonight. Please try to say.